Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Prattville Business Meeting this evening. First items on our agenda this evening are public hearings. Madam Clerk, please call the row please.
Counselor Strickland.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Sarns.
Here.
Counselor Hables.
Here.
Counselor Shpetchit.
Here.
Counselor Bunn.
Here.
First public hearing this evening is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have various rezoned lots vacated for time of eleven. Chapter sixty-seven of Dakota, Alabama, nineteen seventy-five is amended. Is anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Is anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Hearing none, declare the public hearing on this matter closed. Resolution number two, to vacate certain property located within Goldson Place subdivision, flat number one. Is anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Is anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Hearing none, declare the public hearing on resolution number two to be completed. This time we will move into our third public hearing. There's an ordinance to rezonate property located in Highway eighty-two and Highway thirty-one and McQueen Smith Road from FAR Forest Agricultural and Recreation to B-two, general business and R-three, single-family residential. Expect some of you who are here this evening to be a spectator and some of you are participants. We welcome both groups. If you desire to speak this evening, we have a few rules for order and efficiency. At the appropriate time, those desiring to speak will be asked to queue up on the outside aisles closest to their seat. This will help facilitate speakers getting to the podium. Tonight, we're using a sign-in sheet, which is at the clerk's desk, which is right here on the corner. Ultimately, the first two of you that are in line will be invited to jointly go to the clerk's desk. The first speaker to the podium will be from the east wall, the second will be from the west wall. After the first speaker concludes, the third speaker from the east wall will approach the clerk's desk to sign in. We will continue to alternate sides of the room until all standing have spoken. From the clerk's desk, you will be recognized to come by the chair, to be invited to come to the podium, which is right in front. After arriving at the podium, please slowly give your name and address for the audience. After having given your name and address, your three-minute time limit will begin. As you reach one minute remaining, I will give you a sign to bring your comments to a close. If you're still speaking when the timer goes off, you will be politely interrupted. Thank for your comments and invited to return to your seat. We want your comments to be effective and the process to be as efficient as possible. To help facilitate the process, assume you are the third speaker or later. The first two speakers have just said exactly what you wanted to say. You're still requested to come to the podium, give your name and address, and simply state in your own words that you agree with, you support, you endorse previous comments if that is the case. If you have additional information or comments to share concerning an agenda item this evening, you're invited to do so within your allotted remaining time. The council is present to hear your comments, not to respond to your questions. Your comments will be directed to me as the chair. Representative of the petitioner will be allotted five minutes to present this petition. After his presence here, those desiring to speak will be invited to queue up on the outside walls. Is the petition present? If you would come forward.
It's all right, right here?
Yes, sir.
My name is Max Vaughn, Goodemills and Kaywood, and I'm representing X D and D Land Development, and we are requesting zoning of parcels located north of Highway eighty-two between McQueen Smith Road and Thirty-one, also the south or the northwest quadrant of the same roads. There is two different zonings we're requesting. We're requesting R-three. There is a one-hundred-and-thirteen-acre parcel here, a forty-four-point-one-acre parcel in this location, a sixteen-point-seven-acre parcel for B-two located in the northwest quadrant of McQueen Smith Road and eighty-two, and a forty-two-point-three-acre B-two parcel on the northwest quadrant of eighty-two and thirty-one. And as part of this zoning request, we have been aware of the city's intentions to modify the R-three zoning to exclude multifamily by appeal. In light of that information, we have submitted a letter to the council requesting that the hearing of this zoning request be postponed to the August seventh, two thousand and eighteen meeting. We understand that at that meeting, the zoning modifications will take place, and we are perfectly fine with the R-three zoning as the city is requesting to modify. And we have copied that letter. Hopefully, everybody has seen that, but we'll be happy to address any questions if anybody has. And I can leave this map right here for anybody to use as they come up and ask questions.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else present that would like to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance? Hearing none, is anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? If so, if you would please queue up on the outside aisles. Sir, if you would come to the clerk's desk and sign in, please, and the first one on the west wall, come forward and sign in also. Please come forward, give your name and address, please, sir.
Robert Clemm. I reside at one oh seven Hayloof, and I feel like we have enough traffic going through Terra and Sheila already. To open up these lanes around my school would be not good at all. And I think a lot of people in here agree with it. Yes, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
I have your petition signed on the line.
Sir, if you would come to the desk and sign in, you will be the third speaker.
I live on Jenny Drive. Prattville's foundation was built on the strength of its people. I think that's shown here tonight with the people that are present. With that being said, because we're all here, this warrants us due process. I ask you on April third to research this in preparation for today's hearing. There's no reason to take or postpone this, and to do so is considered out of order and obviously an attempt to avoid consideration. The citizens obviously care about this project, and we ask that you hear us and openly make a decision tonight. I have a petition with over five hundred signatures from citizens, not only in Silver Hills, but also from Prattville and the surrounding area. The problems on McQueen Smith are a community problem. There are over thirteen hundred homes that will be directly affected in Prattville East. That's roughly thirty-five hundred voters, and it does include their friends and family. There are countless others that are affected indirectly. They travel McQueen Smith daily, their children attend school, and we rely on our first responders when our time of need. This trickles outside of the overlook. In two thousand and fourteen, McQueen Smith on a scale from A to F was graded a C and below a C during peak times. This comes from their own city documents. I asked repeatedly for a copy of the current traffic study or the sketch plan, but to date, I have not received it. So I'm sure it's worse now. We lack the money to improve McQueen Smith, but we're not willing to go into debt for it like we did the wastewater. What's the difference? This would be the largest apartment complex in the city. Silver Hills exceeds the seventy-two mainframe units on two-point-four-two of the comp plan that the city has. We have twenty-nine hundred apartments already, and the census population numbers don't even merit a half-something. I don't have an accurate number of single-family homes. The number the city provided me was grossly underestimated in comparison to the Census Bureau. Anybody can look that up online. You see, I didn't go by what I was told. Too many untruths were flying around. By now, you should know, when I say something, I have documented proof to back it up, and you are welcome to see it anytime you want. The problem was, the more I dug, the more I uncovered, and the more concerned I became at the lack of transparency and the withholding of public records. If you will look at the comp plan, two-point-two-eight, we have exceeded the demand in housing for the city. You all received an email from me, and sadly, only two of the eight took the time to respond. Thank you, Richard and Albert. I don't have a problem with progress when it's done correctly. The progress that has been occurring in the city over the last few years has been detrimental. In three years, we have dropped from number four to number ten as the best town in Alabama to raise a young family.
Yes, sir. It's still in your three minutes.
Oh, my three minutes is up?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is William Bloom. I'm in Sacramento, Ohio. She covered most of it. Vote no. Pregnant. Thank you.
John McKinnigan, two-eleven, Dear Trace, I'm reading this for Karen Mitchell. She couldn't attend. Mayor Gillespie and the city council, by now he figured out there's no doubt that the citizenry has become skeptical, suspicious, and in some cases disgusted with the political game plan involving the various rezoning projects proposed and enacted by this council. You are probably as shocked and disappointed by some of the things we have uncovered as we are, but for a very different reason. We may not have connected all the dots yet, but we will. I'm going to leave it to my friends and neighbors to enlighten you as to our findings. What I'd want to do is offer you a solution, a way out, if you will, that is viable in its simplicity. It came to me while I was working in my yard this past weekend. It's biblical by design. Most of us are familiar with the parable about what happens to the seeds that fall on fertile ground versus the seeds that fall on barren soil. The seeds that fall on fertile ground survive and grow and produce, whereas the seeds that fall on rocky, barren soil eventually wither and die. We all know this is not about gardening, but if the parable fits, think of the council as gardeners and the Smith property, H-twenty-two rezoning, H-eighty-two rezoning project as a garden. Anyone who gardens or has common sense for that matter knows that if you want to have a successful garden, you have to start by preparing the soil. You till it, weed it, and fertilize it. You make sure you have an adequate source of water, and that once you plant your plants or seeds, you can provide it with protection from harmful things that would impede their growth and development. Your reward for all your forethought and planning will be a beautiful, flourishing garden that everyone wants to enjoy. But if you don't properly prepare the soil and provide adequate water, your plants will struggle to survive. And if you don't maintain the garden by constantly weeding it, keeping the harmful pests and other detrimental elements away, it will eventually succumb to these destructive influences. If we want the Smith property rezoning project to succeed, it's important that we strengthen the infrastructure first. I say "we" because it is our tax dollars that will make this happen. We need to upgrade the wastewater system, which appeared in our rear motion. We need to improve and widen McQueen Smith Road to support the additional traffic. We probably should have borrowed the ten million projected to accomplish this when we borrowed the thirty million for the wastewater upgrading. We need to figure out better, less invasive access roads that won't put our children and schoolchildren at unnecessary risk. We need to secure adequate police and fire presence to make sure the residents are safe and detrimental, and the detrimental elements kept at bay, which includes eliminating the addition of apartments since their varied presence has an unfavorable effect on single-family neighborhoods. Once we have all those things in order, the rezoned area will be able to grow and prosper and become a source of pride for the community. If we don't prepare the proposed rezoning area prior to development, it will struggle and wither and never reach its full potential. It will become overrun with weeds and other negative elements that will ravage its development. This kind of self-destruction will trickle down throughout the community in unfavorable, ultimately damaging ways, because once it starts, it's almost impossible to stop. I don't think infusion is the legacy any of you had in mind. One more thing. Therefore, please vote no on rezoning of this property. Let's prepare the garden for growth first and continue to make Prattville a preferred community of biblical proportions. Karen Mitchell.
All of you, this time, you will be right after this gentleman. Go right ahead, sir.
I live at eighteen-twenty-two Jenny Drive, and I had the distinction of being married to that wonderful lady that started this all. I'm gonna go ahead and finish it, not because I was told to, but because I believe in her. In three years, Prattville, which I just moved here a few years ago after I did get married this woman, she said, "I'm not coming to Montgomery, you're coming here," and was very glad to. But I'm gonna go ahead and read this. "In three years, we've dropped from number four to number ten in the best town in Alabama to raise a young family. Ask yourself what has changed in the last three years? It's not just one thing, it's several, but it boils down to the quality of the life of the residents. You, as the council, have not represented the best interests of your constituents or the city. You have not preserved the strong economic development tool that any city can have to improve quality of life. You have dug for the truth and the facts. We don't completely blame you. I'm just as guilty." Because, as you can see, most of us didn't come here to listen to what was going on, and so now we have. "You haven't dug for the truth and the facts, but I can't blame you, and I'm just as guilty. You trusted, we trusted what you were told, and I sincerely hope you will start digging. A good start would be an independent audit and fresh eyes performed by the state. If you grant this rezoning, you are going against the recommendations of this property's sketch, the sketch plan, and against the wishes of the citizens of Prattville. This will adversely affect the surrounding property, the general neighborhood, and the community as a whole." And for those of you who don't know me, I am from Montgomery, and I'm a retired firefighter from there. I know what this can do, okay? I know what it'll do to your fire department. Trust me, I know. And I know what it'll do to your police department. You've got great men and great women working in those jobs, but you're gonna cause a problem, and the other residents will hurt, and you're already having to ask Montgomery to come up here occasionally. We need the protection, but thank you for your time.
My name is Eugene Hall. I live two oh six, Court Street in Prattville. I'm here to stand about twenty seconds, asking you a question. The rest, I'm gonna look at this map here, because nobody behind me is seeing this map. I would request that you turn it around so that at least they can get an idea of what we're talking about. Maybe they already know. Maybe yes, and well, okay. Having said that, will you be building these apartments on the front where people will have to drive through these apartments to get to where they're going from their homes? I know you're not supposed to answer questions, but is that a question fair to ask?
Not to us.
Will the people that live in these homes they live by have to travel through the apartment complex to get to where they're going to the same highway? That's my question. Have they got any time left? I'll get back to you.
Thank you, sir.
I own the property at three oh two Sheila Boulevard. I'll try to talk fast. I co-signed a mortgage in two thousand and seven for a family to get in this home. They divorced, left. I had to pay all the mortgage. Then I let another family members move in. I just evicted them. They tore it up. I just dropped forty-four thousand in this house. The last worker left, and I saw a notice on my door about this rezoning. I'm asking you, please, please don't do this. I know Richard, me and my child. This rezoning and the value dropping on this property of mine, y'all don't see me cry. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Wallace, and I live in Irma Lake. And I didn't come in here with the intent to speak, but I feel that I need to. I've lived in my home in Irma Lake for thirty-five years. When they moved here, I thought this was the most precious town I had ever seen. It is so beautiful. The downtown area with the homes that they have here, the cotton fields. I raised three children here. They have grown and lived, and I hate that we're gonna lose that by continuing to build homes. We have neighborhoods that are not yet filled with empty lots still for sale. I am concerned about the traffic that's gonna come to our neighborhood and the extra traffic. I don't know if... I'm concerned for the schoolchildren who walk, my children walk to school. The neighborhood's young, little kids. There's just several things that I'd like for you to consider. I'm concerned also about McQueen Smith. Are we gonna go ahead with this, with this, and then the study come back to say you can expand McQueen Smith? Is there room there? The utilities that would have to be moved? Is there room to do that? I just, I would like for you to consider holding this off until you can do more research about how that would affect our community that used to be our beautiful community. Thank you for your time.
My name is Greg Spears. I live on three forty-one Janus Street, just south of Overlook Park. I have five children that have, or are going to school in Prattville. All of them have gone to school there, Daniel Pratt Elementary. Same as my youngest, who starts sending out the kindergarten this coming year. They've all been able to walk to school safely with minimal traffic through that area. I am very concerned about the increase in traffic and the safety of the schoolchildren, part of those, me and my own children, walking up to Daniel Pratt Elementary with the proposed entrances that are really coming through the west side of this proposed development. Also, with my children in Daniel Pratt Elementary, the junior high and high school, which all service our neighborhood there, all those schools are full. I wonder what's being done from the county end and if there's any discussion with our city here as far as creating more school space. Ms. Mitchell, who I've never met, appreciate her comments on the infrastructure. I agree with all of that. I would highly recommend any development or any more houses a builder anywhere in Prattville. Get some schools in place to give our students opportunity to have the correct classroom sizes, get the roads taken care of, have them mentioned, and then, after all that's in place, consider adding some more residential, more holes in the area. And then, at that point in time, if we decide to do that and that's the right thing to do, do with the right properties. Don't pile them in so you can touch two houses at one time. Don't pile in these multifamily units. Twenty, thirty years down the road, property values are gonna sink. There are all types of individuals you don't want, you're making up your community. You're gonna live in these places and say you're degraded. Give homes and properties that someone puts pride into, someone that puts love into. Maintain property values and create a stable revenue stream. Don't pile stuff in there so somebody can make a quick buck and ruin our community. Thank you for your time.
I'm Doug Huff, eighteen thirty-one Terra Drive. My main concern is this is the third plan I've seen since I was presented the notification of the public hearing, so it's hard to be for anything moving target. We don't know all the facts, so it's hard to be for something that you cannot know. The biggest thing, my concern, because I live right there up on Terra, is the traffic on McQueen Smith, especially with the YMCA and Daniel Pratt there, the safety of the traffic. This will add at least eight hundred vehicles in that neighborhood on that street, and the traffic cannot handle this, especially, most of them would probably work near Maxwell and Thirty-one and McQueen Smith. Right now, it's a danger without a light or a flare. We don't have the infrastructure to go forward for this, right? We need to put the horse before the cart. That's what we do with this. Thank you.
My name is Richard Harris, and some of y'all know. I live one twenty-one Irma. I'm trying not to say a lot of things, 'cause a lot of us can see. Ms. Marianne, as y'all do at your homework, I hope you'll have, because we have in our homework. So I hope y'all are honorable enough to at least look into it and to not listen to ruin it. A week prior to fifteen of March, some of us, not all of us, received a letter in our mailbox about this rezoning. This rezoning map that was sent was different than the one we got here. It said nothing about apartments, nothing about apartments. We found out through our own investigation that there was another map, so it came in here and it said apartments, and that's what's got everybody riled up. We know the intention is about apartments. During that commission's meeting, we asked several times, "What do you plan on doing? Give us the details." They never could give us details. Finally, it came out, after the commission says, "This is not about apartments. It's not about apartments." The whole time, it was saying the word "multi-complex" was on the wall right behind you. We did find out during that meeting that it was a plan. We was being deceived. It was a plan, but two hundred homes and three hundred apartments. So the people's already felt misled. I would give some numbers, Marianne mentioned about the homes. It's thirteen thousand four hundred, it's on the Census Bureau, thirteen thousand four hundred homes here, and we have over seventeen hundred, and some still being projected. That's homes and apartments. We got thirteen household, thirteen four hundred homes, thirteen four hundred household families, according to the Census Bureau. We got thirty-five thousand. Over the last six-year span of the Census Bureau, we only grew sixteen hundred and changed, sixteen hundred and forty people in a six-year period. It's on the Census Bureau. We're not, we used to grow fast, now we're growing slow. Thirty-three-point-six percent of that is minor children. Over eighty percent of that is people that's been in their homes for multiple years. I just want to let y'all know, we've been having a lot of work done before this plan started, before this meeting tonight. Alabama Power has already been working, working on this special project. So we wonder if it's a pre-made decision or not. We don't know. We hope it ain't. We're tired of broken promises. It's been broken promises. I can attest to them through the years, through the city council. Maybe not the sitting ones, but prior ones have went back on the word, and I can attest to them. I hope you're honorable enough to do the right thing. Remember, you represent the people. You don't represent individuals. You represent the people. That's what you were elected to do. Represent the people, the citizens, and if you can't represent us the way we want to, then when figuring out next election, we find somebody that can. we want to, then when figuring out next election, we find somebody that can.
Hi, I'm Hunter Midland, reside at 120 Alicia Drive. I've been a resident of Prattville, specifically Overlook. I am twenty-five years old, I've lived here for twenty-two years. I grew up here as a child. I grew up here with some of your school kids and we went to school together at Daniel Pratt. I would raise, I mean, intended to raise my family here. I moved back and forth and had to go around, and I finally said, you know what, I want to land in Prattville and I want to land in my old neighborhood. And I trusted the fact that we would be able to live here and to be able to live in peace, comfort, and security that I've known growing up since nineteen ninety-three. I've been here through the tornado, I've been here and seen how strong our community is, and I just do not support this movement whatsoever due to the fact that we do not have a lack of infrastructure to support this. We do not have the backing. Many of my friends, Montgomery PD, Prattville PD, tell me, I'm scared about this. They won't say it to you, they won't tell you their boss this, they're an employee and they understand that that puts their job at security, but they'll tell somebody in confidence, I'm scared about what this is going to do for me. I'm scared about what this property value is going to do, we just recently purchased in September. I made a huge effort to come back over here, now that we have to kind of look at the fact that we may have apartments within five minutes down the road, and me with what I do for a living as an exterminator, I've seen how fast apartments go downhill. I could gain specifics, but let's not do that on camera and let's not do this in front of a lot of people that might take offense to that. Tracture bound, obviously. But I'll tell you, this is just something that's scary. This is something that turned around from having peace of mind and security, knowing that my kids can go walk to school like I did. I walked over there, you know, from growing up all the way over and we didn't have to worry about a thing. I think the last time we ever had really a concern was if somebody's bike got taken over there at Daniel Pratt. Knowing that that's going to add that many more schoolchildren and that's going to add that many more adults over into the neighborhood, which degrade the integrity of not only of Daniel Pratt, as far as you've seen, it has expanded and expanded and having to grow and compensate for so many children, they've added the new wing. Previously, to me, we didn't have that big computer wing, we just had to pile in half of hall and half hall and the other. I just wish, you know, out of all of you, just to consider this, consider what this will do and have a long-term effect. You know, the dollar will hurt and not having it in our pockets here in the city, but we will never leave you if you keep it this way it is. That's all.
My name is Jason Keela, 773 Summer Lane. I was not going to say anything either, I was just going to listen. Want to tell you a little bit of a boring story to you, but my wife and I were married, we moved to Mobile, spent some time, came back to the area where we grew up in Montgomery. And we started looking for an area to settle down and to raise children. And we knew it wasn't going to be Montgomery. So what did they say? They said, go to Prattville. So we came to Prattville. We rented for a while, loved the city. My son is now two years old, and we pulled him in a wagon down the road, on the sidewalk. I'm scared about what that will do, the traffic will do, that this proposition will cause. The traffic, if you just want to sit there any afternoon, no one goes to speed limit on Sheila and Terra as it is, it's just going to get worse. So I'm speaking for my son, speaking for my child that's not yet born, speaking for my wife who cannot be here. I ask for you to vote no on this resolution here. I commute to Birmingham, had the opportunity to, like I said, by Montgomery, by anywhere from here in Birmingham all along the way, we chose Prattville. And I am here for no other reason than just to say, please vote no. I think this will be detrimental straight to our first responders that are here to protect us as citizens, so I'd ask for your consideration in that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Forrest, I live in Stapleburg Trail in Highland Ridge. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, I totally did not intend speaking either, but one thing that concerns me is there's a lot of motion here and it's great because I love how much people love living in Prattville, why we moved here ten years ago. My husband's in the military, a little of the military comes and moves here, but we went out for all those militaries, like, oh sweet, we're going there for one year, we're going to rent, and we're going to get out. We bought our house ten years ago because it was Prattville, we're like, everybody's like, you've got to go to Prattville. And that's why we moved here to Prattville. And eight, ten years ago, we bought our house with the intention of retiring here, and now we're getting ready to retire here, and now I'm scared. Now I'm like, I don't think I can do that anymore. These schools are not full, they are bursting, they are overcrowded. Let's help, let's try to, let's try to, and just, we're already, we should keep brushing up against kids at school. This is ridiculous, we can't even keep our kids safe and healthy in the schools that we already have, and you want to add more families? No! Build new schools now, forget building a school if there's more homes. We need more schools now. We need bigger schools, we need more teachers, we don't need fifty students in an elementary class where those teachers can't take care of those students. We don't need more homes and more families that, without a police department and a fire department that can handle it. Stop! We need to take care of what we have. Like he was saying, fire departments, police departments, if we have to call people in from Montgomery, come on! We are Prattville, we shouldn't have to call people in from Montgomery. We need to build up our fire department, we need to build up our police department, we need to support them, and we need to have better schools before we even think about expanding to where we can, we have businesses that are empty. Kmart, the old Food World, has been sitting there empty for ten years. Why do we need more? We have empty, we have empty, and we're building more. We don't need that, we need to take care of what we already have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, my name is Paul Beckman. I live at eighteen oh three Terra Drive in Prattville, Alabama. I have lived in Prattville for thirty-eight years, and I've seen the population. I've also served as your state representative here for District Eighty-Eight. And what concerns me, we keep visiting the same problem over and over again. When I came here in nineteen eighty, we had approximately thirteen to seventeen thousand people living in the city of Prattville. Right now, we have over thirty-five thousand people living in the city of Prattville, and McQueen Smith is still the same as it was thirty years ago. Recently, we said, I heard somebody said, well, McQueen Smith can handle it. I want to bring to attention, just recently, we had into a wet season, and we had water that washed away some of McQueen Smith. And how long did it take us to get it fixed? How long did it tell us to put a ditch that we had to put a drain there? So you want to tell me by putting three hundred houses there and apartment complexes that McQueen Smith will be able to handle it? I am very concerned because of the safety. I am very concerned we have YMCA right there. How many times have you all gone by and seen the crowds that have been accumulating there because of the projects that they've done a great job on? Until McQueen Smith and some of your infrastructure is basically built and have the support as far as the finance to do so, I feel that this situation is moot because we keep going back to the same situation in reference to safety, safety, safety. And if you can't meet the safety of the people, then you can't meet the needs of the people, whether it's education, business, economic development, or whatever. So I ask you at this time to look at the facts, look at the funding that would come in, and right now, we seem to be visiting the same problem, and right now, my answer is no as far as this issue is concerned, and I would hope that you will respect and listen to you constituents that put you in office. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this matter? Hearing now and declare the public hearing on this matter closed. At this point, we will move into our regular agenda. If you would please stand before the pledge of allegiance and our invitation.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in prayer, please. Father, in the midst of our personal agendas, we call to thank you for the generous gift of this day, for your gifts of life, health, strength, and for the safety of our community. Our heartfelt sympathies are extended to friends and families of our community that have lost loved ones in the recent days. We're mindful of all that are daily wrestling with the challenges of life. We ask for your hand of comfort and your gift of peace to be with all affected. We pray for all citizens that are providing service to their fellow man, whether local or abroad, whether military, civilian, or public service. We pray for their efforts to be successful, and at the end of their duty, for their safe return to their family. We pray for the health and healing of nations in conflict, our country, our state, our great city, and their respective leadership, and for all those that have an influence on the history. Tonight, as we conduct the business of our city, we pray our thoughts and actions are pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray. County Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Counselor Strickland.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Sarnes.
Here.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Incestration.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Claring for President, I call a meeting to order. The territory track for this month is willingness to change my schedule and allow our days to be delayed. This time, the Chair will entertain approval for the minutes of the public hearing in City Council meetings held on April seventeen, twenty eighteen. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Say.
Do we have a second? Is there any discussion? All is in favor of adopting the minutes, as written, signified by raising your right hand. All those lights on, the minutes are approved. This time, the Chair will entertain comments from persons present regarding tonight's Yes, sir.
I would like that map turned around like we were talking about earlier and put up here so everybody can see it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Sir, anyone else like to address the council on anything on tonight's agenda? This time, Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. Thank you. You know, strength and growth come over through continuous efforts and struggle. Growth is never given your chance in the result of forces working together. And all of tonight is a clear example of forces working together for a greater and for a better Prattville. In the coming days, I'll be on this earth by the grace of God for sixty years, and I've seen a lot of growth and I've seen a lot of changes in Prattville. So I look out across the audience here, I recognize some of the ones who have been here right alongside me, maybe not as long, maybe longer, who knows? But, you know, Prattville does have some challenges. Some of the things, some of the fibers that actually pull us together, that make us Prattville, that make us what so many of us want, and that's one of the reasons why we have so many others that have come here because of military or some other reasons. Maybe it's the little creep behind us or Daniel Pratt has been able to instill in so many of us, but I'm glad they're here. But, you know, one of the things that, what I've sort of heard tonight is three things that sort of pull some of us together, most of us together. It's our streets, and our schools, and our citizens. And I want to commend this council for all the hard work that we have been doing over the last many years trying to pull, pull together some long-range planning for that. It was mentioned earlier how our wastewater plant is being upgraded, and just one of the two, we're having a major upgrade, the second one is having a minor. We are working on our infrastructure. I hope one of the legacies I'll be able to leave here with is the fact that maybe I was a mayor of infrastructure, and I certainly hope so because I've seen so many reports about crumbling infrastructure across America. And Prattville is so much further ahead than so many other communities, with less in so many ways. A lot of the cases, it is because of the passion of the people, the passion to get up here and sit in your seats, and I certainly do appreciate that because it's not easy, it's very difficult. Hopefully, with all the knowledge that we've been able to accumulate, hopefully with all the different policies, procedures, we'll be able to pull together, hopefully with all the funding that we'll be able to bring together and provide the services that are so needed. But I'll tell you this, I will put our public safety before any public safety in the River Region, in the state, in the country. We have the best public safety there is compared to anybody our size. We are number one in that area, I am very passionate about that. Our infrastructure has some holes in it, but we're working very diligently to pull that together. Our schools, even though it's a county school system, this council and others before it have actually helped pull some funding together to continue proper education, and where it is the lowest funded in the state, they have achieved some very good results on that. Is Prattville ready to sit down and sit back and wait? I don't think so. I certainly appreciate all the hard work and dedication from this council and the passion and the hard work from our citizens out here because they are a driving force for us all. But, you know, you can't just stop with a subject matter like this, it's got to be continued, on and on and on. It's about the quality of life, whether it's football and how important Friday night lights can be, because that is the quality of life. That's more of a, that's more of a community event than it is about football. So quality of life is so, so important. Public safety is important. There's so many different things, the fibers that actually bring a community together, and I am very proud to say that I am a Prattvillian. But, Mr. President, City Councilors, you know, at the last council meeting, I discussed presenting, presenting to the planning commission a change in the R3 zoning. The request of removing the use on appeal from the R3 zoning is officially in process. I'd like to repeat that. The request of removing the use on appeal from the R3 zoning is officially in process. This process could take approximately ninety-plus or minus days depending on the council's decision. I believe this change shouldn't have happened a long time ago, but because of our growth today and rezoning, I believe that this is the catalyst to make this change. And I appreciate your support on this removal as we move forward in the very near future on that. And also, I appreciate the support of the Smiths for asking for their project to be put on hold to that will coordinate the same change over. They have, they have a lot of property here, and I don't think that anybody here in this room can really believe that it's going to stay a cotton field for the rest of our lives. I remember out in front of the post office, that was a one or two-lane road at one point in time, McQueen Smith, the same way. So there has been a lot of improvements recently, just recently. Councilman Jackson and I sat with some of the property owners that will be affected by some of the widening of McQueen Smith. There has been some money set aside to acquire some of the ride-up ways in that, and we are moving forward on that, and I'll be glad to bring a report very near future on, as we move forward on that. We have started an infrastructure reserve to help improve the infrastructure. There are three major areas, which will be Fairview Avenue, McQueen Smith, and Highway Eighty-Two, which is also known as Highway Fourteen. But, you know, councilors, there is progress in Prattville, and the landscape is changing in our South Industrial Park even as we speak. We should have more progress reports on the change party project soon. I'm also, also I'm happy to report that the EDA grant has been authorized to begin the bid process for the county and city road and bridge projects. I'd like to repeat that again. The grant has been authorized to begin the process for the county and city road and bridge projects. Councilor, one of the benefactors in this state, county, and city project will be our County Board of Education, so they will be receiving the education and laboring taxes. That also coincides with the project of help keeping our poor dealership here in Ataga County, the city of Prattville. There's been, that was a county-city project, that's a big benefactor on that one as well, in my opinion. in my opinion, will be the Board of Education. So I just think that, in my opinion, that shows how much that the partnerships are important and how we are moving forward in a very positive way. Now, on another note, the Pratt Park Pavilion has been removed. I know I've had several comments on that, but the structure has been deemed unsafe, and so that Pavilion is gone. There've been a lot of memories there. The memories can still be acquired here in Pratt Park because one of the projects that came about in the summer of 2012, and I hope many people here remember that because that was the year that Praval came together. That was the year that the Slack Pad was won. It was a Coca-Cola challenge, and I believe Praval ended up having somewhere around thirty million votes on that. And as mentioned earlier, Praval today is somewhere between thirty, around thirty-five to forty thousand people. And so for a community of our size to come up with that many votes on a program like that is just completely amazing. It just shows how the community can come together. With council approval tonight, this bid on the pavilion will be awarded, which has come in under budget. I want to commend all our engineering, our public works, our Parks and Rec Department, all the different departments, our city clerk, finance departments, all the various departments have worked to get this project to come together. This is another, this is a project that's been trying to come together for approximately three years, three years. The first bid that we had to come in on it, I believe, was three times, correct me, Kelly Cook, three times more than what we ever estimated, three times more than what we had budgeted for. And because of the hard work and so forth, this project with council approval should be awarded under budget. Construction of the new pavilion will begin soon, and if the good Lord, good Lord shines upon us, it should be used hopefully for the Fourth of July, America's birthday. You know, Maple Street project right here behind us, just on the other side of the creek, it's winding down, preparing for final inspections. We'll receive many compliments on this project to date. And I want to thank you, councilor, for bringing this three-year project to fruition. And if you haven't noticed, there's a new shop in town. We're honored to welcome Kris McCream to Praval next week, and our sources tell us they had a wonderful grand opening. And it's just so many different amenities that have come to town because of some of the wonderful growth that we've had, but, you know, not all growth is wonderful. There's been a lot of challenges, there are some parking issues, there are some travel issues, but there are definitely situations that will come up that we, as elected officials, will be able to handle in the near future because of long-range planning. On another note, this week is National Small Business Week. I want to personally thank all of our small businesses who continue investing, investing in our community. Some of those small businesses might be farmers, they might be some agricultural farmers that we have seen around here for many years, they might be tree farmers. We also have some other shops that are opening up downtown. So it is the small businesses that are the economic engine of America. They help provide growth in small towns, small towns like Praval. I want to thank them, and I hope each of you will also. May is Bike Month, and I'll be presenting a proclamation to the Montgomery Bicycle Club at the Mayor's Bike Ride. Hope you'll join me for this event in Bike Ride on Saturday, May the nineteenth. We'll kick off Kids' Park Day and Bike to Parks, and Bike to Pratt Park's finish line to the Toucha Truck. If you haven't been to the Toucha Truck, if you don't have a grandchild or a child, just come on down anyway, we'll, we'll be down there and show you around. But I also hope to see each and everybody here that's here tonight at the National Night of Prayer event at the First Baptist Church at six-thirty. Mr. President, that's the end of my lengthy report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Rabbit.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Hi, if we hold this on the zone.
Yes, sir.
And we're holding it for the R3 to be cleaned up with no apartments. On that map, is there any threat, if we hold it till August, that any apartments could come in that area that we're discussing?
Not only the R3, no, sir.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of at all. And one of the reasons for cleaning up the R3, and again, you know, there's some changes in any arena that you can look at from time to time, and, excuse me one moment, this might be a very important. Robbie Anderson, can you go adjust the air conditioning, please? Automation is not always what it's cracked out to be. I hope the air conditioner will come on soon, but it is starting to get warm in here. But, no, under the R3, and that's one reason to clean this up, is that because there was that provision, transparency has been thrown out there, and I know, you know, knowing you guys, I know some of y'all have plucked sometime, and I know that your heart is where it ought to be, and I really do appreciate that. But this provision has been in there for many, many years. I don't know when it got in there, don't know how it got in there, don't know why it got in there. But if we're going to use one of the political buzzwords, you know, for transparency, I believe it does need to be out, out of it. We, that is before the planning commission now. Now, if somebody does want apartments, then they'll go back to a process and they'll ask for an R4 rating, and on that one, we're actually even see if we might need to change the verbiage. They want to make sure that everybody knows that what's going to be coming, so that way we do have a town hall meeting or something else, we do have a good turnout. But I truly believe that the process is working. And, but to answer your question directly, as far as I know, this provision is taken out of R3. This R3 is strictly single-family dwellings with a sixty-foot frontage on the, of city planners here for further clarification. I hope he's not in the fidgets. I hear a yes, see a yes.
Okay, so if we clean that up to R3, what other threat would there be? I mean, is B2 a threat for apartments or anything?
Well, now, I believe on B2, which is around the perimeter by the Highway eighty-two or Highway six, as some call it, they could come back use on appeal on that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, in that business district, on that one, they could.
Okay, so is there any possibility that we can clean up B2?
That is not before the planning commission, but if, I would be glad to present that back at the planning commission and send.
Right, because the people spoken and, you know, we were going to hold it, and I don't know if, if B2 is not cleaned up, I think I'm going to have to vote no on this. I stood five years ago when I ran for office that I didn't want any more apartments, I thought Praval had enough apartments. My parents lived in Overlook, I grew up in Overlook, and I love the community, and I will vote no on this, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to the mayor? At this point, we'll move into a report on special committees. Counselor Jackson?
No, sir.
Counselor Sarnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Cables?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Stritchitt?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir.
We have an opportunity this evening to create a consent agenda. The items would be for a resolution to authorize the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per time of eleven, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five is amended. Resolution number two, to grant a retail beer off premises only and retail table one, off premises only, license to Walgreens Incorporated, doing business as right A zero seven one seven two. Resolution number three, to declare various weeded lots to be of public nuisance, order their abatement, set a public hearing for time of eleven, Chapter sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five is amended. And resolution number four, to submit the twenty seventeen municipal water pollution prevention annual reports for the Pine Creek and Ottock Creek wastewater treatment facilities to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to place these resolutions on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of placing these items on a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, we now have a consent agenda properly before us. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion to adopt, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed by a light sign, the consent agenda is adopted. At this point, we will move into our regular agenda. Resolution number one is to vacate certain property located within Golson Place subdivision, Platte number one. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the owners of certain properties located within Golson Place subdivision, Platte number one, as recorded in Platte Book two thousand and nine, page eighteen, in the Office of the Judge of Probate of Ottock County, Alabama, and described in attachment A, and shown in attachment B are as follows. Red Rock Ridge LLC petition along with Glenn T. Smith and Joshua B. Smith, James T. Reeves and Marshall B. Reeves, Bruce Little, Rebecca Cox Little, Randall B. Bishop, Blake Butler Bishop, Amy Maria Bishop, and James D. Knight, George W. Chance, and Lakin Q. Chance, Richard Byer Jr., Gordon Aaron Adams, Summer Pugh Adams, Matthew E. Strunk fellow. And whereas said owners have filed an updated petition requesting that the City of Praval vacate said property as described in attachment A, and shown in attachment B, and nullify the effective dedication of said property, including all roads, easements, and other public facilities, to public use. And whereas said petition includes the following streets, Golson Place Boulevard, Golson Hills, Road, Old Camp Road, Gray Place, and whereas the property requested to be vacated is located inside the city limits of City of Praval, and whereas it has been determined that said property is no longer needed for public purposes, and that it is in the public's best interest that said property be vacated to the petitioner. And whereas pursuant to Section twenty-three dash four dash twenty, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, required public care for said vacation was held on May first, two thousand and eighteen, and at such time and place, all persons who desire had an opportunity to be heard, favorable, or in opposition to said vacation. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Praval, that property listed in attachment A, and shown in attachment B is hereby vacated, Red Rock Ridge LLC petition along with Glenn T. Smith and Joshua B. Smith, James T. Reeves and Marshall B. Reeves, Bruce Little and Rebecca Cox Little, Randall B. Bishop, Blake Butler Bishop, Amy Maria Bishop, and James D. Knight, George W. Chance, Lakin Q. Chance, Richard Byer Jr., Gordon Aaron Adams, and Summer Pugh Adams, Matthew E. Strunk fellow. By quitclaim deed, and that the mayor hereby authorize and encourage to execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of this resolution. Bid further resolved that the city clerk is instructed to have the resolution recorded in the Office of the Judge of Probate of Ottock County, Alabama. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All in favor of its adoption, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution number two, to release funds for the purchase of two Power Edge R540 servers from the SHI International Corporation through the National IPA Purchasing Cooperative for the Information Technology Department, at a cost not to exceed thirty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Counselor Stritchitt, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for two Power Edge R540 servers in the Information Technology Department, whereas said servers are available through the National IPA Purchasing Cooperative contract number two zero one eight zero one one dash zero two, from SHI International Corporation, at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars each, and whereas said servers are budgeted expense of the IP Information Technology Department. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council, City of Praval, that funds in amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to SHI International Corporation for said servers, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal budget line item Information Technology slash capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting this resolution, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution number three, excuse me, number four, to release the funds for the purchase of one twenty-eighteen Kenworth T-370 flat dump truck from Truck Works through the national... excuse me, resolution number three it is. To release the funds for the purchase of one John Deere eighty-five G Mini excavator from Warrior Tractor Equipment Company Incorporated, excavator through the National Joint Purchasing Cooperative for the Wastewater Division, at a cost not to exceed one hundred and nine thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Counselor Sarnes, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for one John Deere eighty-five G Mini excavator in the Public Works Department Wastewater Division, whereas said excavator is available through the National Joint Purchasing Cooperative contract number zero three two five one five B A one, Warrior Tractor Equipment Company Incorporated, and not to exceed one hundred and nine three hundred and eighty-two thousand. Whereas said excavator is budgeted expense of the Wastewater Division, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Praval, that said funds not to exceed one hundred and nine thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Warrior Tractor Equipment Company Incorporated for said excavator, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget line item Wastewater Enterprise Fund slash capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution number four, to release the funds for the purchase of one twenty-eighteen Kenworth T-370 flat dump truck from Truck Works through the National Joint Purchasing Cooperative for the Wastewater Division, at a cost not to exceed ninety-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. Counselor Cables, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for one two thousand and eighteen Kenworth T-370 flat dump truck in the Public Works Department slash Wastewater Division, and whereas said truck is available through the National Joint Purchasing Cooperative contract number zero one eight one seven one six dash KTC from Truck Works, at a cost not to exceed ninety-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. And whereas said truck is a budgeted expense at the Wastewater Division, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Praval, that funds in amount not to exceed ninety-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Truck Works for said dump truck, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget line item Wastewater Enterprise Fund slash capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution number five, to release the funds for the purchase of one Toro Workman HDX two-wheel drive utility vehicle from Jerry Page Turf and Irrigation through the National IPA Purchasing Cooperative of the Urban Management Division, at a cost not to exceed twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Counselor Boone, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for one Toro Workman HDX two-wheel drive utility vehicle in the Public Works Department slash Urban Management Division, and whereas said vehicle is available through the National IPA Purchasing Cooperative contract number SP eighteen zero zero five seven from Jerry Page Turf and Investigate Irrigation, at a cost not to exceed twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. And whereas said utility vehicle is a budgeted expense of the Urban Management Division, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Praval, that funds in an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Jerry Page Turf and Irrigation for said utility vehicle, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget line item Urban Management slash capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, thank you. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? Is there any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, this resolution is adopted. Resolution number six, to award bid number zero one eight dash zero zero five to Web Builders Incorporated for the Pratt Park Pavilion improvements, at a cost of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Counselor Boone, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Parks and Recreation Department has a need for improvements to the Pratt Park Pavilion, and whereas the Parks and Recreation Department has specifications drafted for said project, and whereas two sealed bids were received, opened and read on April twenty-six, twenty eighteen, at ten a.m., and Web Builders Incorporated plus the lowest responsible bidder, with a cost of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And whereas this is a budgeted expense of the Parks and Recreation Department. Be it further resolved, the bid number zero one eight dash zero zero five is hereby awarded to Web Builders in the amount of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars for Pratt Park Pavilion improvements. And said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year budget line item Parks and Rec slash Capital Outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion concerning this resolution? All those in favor of its adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, this resolution is adopted. Our next item is an ordinance to resume property located in Highway eighty-two and Highway thirty-one and McQueen Smith Road from FAR Forest Agricultural and Recreation, B two, general business, and R three, single-family residential. Counselor Cables, will you introduce?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. President, I would make a motion right now to honor Mr. Smith's request that this be held until August the seventh, uh, and also give the planning commission an opportunity to revise and approve the R three designation, as well as look at others.
We have a motion to hold this ordinance until August the seventh. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning this ordinance? Hearing none. All those in favor of holding this ordinance until August the seventh signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, this ordinance is held until August the seventh. Number eight is an ordinance also to establish stormwater illicit discharge detection and elimination procedures in compliance with the city of Prattville's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems. Counselor Jackson, would you introduce this ordinance? You may do so by just reading the title.
Yes, sir. To establish stormwater illicit discharge detection and elimination procedures in compliance with the city of Prattville's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems permit.
We have... We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By rule of order, ordinances will be held until our next meeting, May the fifteenth. Ordinance number nine, to establish post-construction stormwater management procedures in compliance with the city of Prattville's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems NPDES permit. Counselor Stritchitt, will you introduce this ordinance?
Yes, sir. To establish post-construction stormwater management procedures in compliance with the city of Prattville's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems. Uh, so moved to move this item, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Also as an ordinance by rule of law, this will be held until our next council meeting. Counselors, this concludes our regular agenda this evening. At this time, the chair will entertain questions, comments from persons present.
Thank you. I wasn't planning to speak, but since you all are talking about cleaning up R three, and Councilman Starnes talked about perhaps cleaning up B two, as you well know, um, I've been on the city, uh, board of zoning adjustment for many years, and I've wanted to see some of the zoning cleaned up. And I wanted to point out an inconsistency between the comp plan, that's the comprehensive plan, that you approved back in January two thousand and eleven, for this area called transitional mixed use. And what that calls for is retail on a very limited scale. Now, here's the, here's the inconsistency. A B two calls for any retail, any wholesale, or any service in unlimited quantity. So a B two granting means you have no control over whether that is entirely retail, entirely wholesale, or entirely service-oriented. But that's not what you wanted when you approved the comp plan. So there's an inconsistency. I'm not sure how you're gonna fix that. I mean, obviously, you could go change your comp plan. And every ten years, by the way, a new comp plan is devised that you're supposed to follow. Um, but I just wanted to point that out, as far as B two. They could end up doing all, all retail, and that may not offend any of you, and it may not offend anybody behind me. I don't, I don't know. I'm just saying, if you're in the cleanup mode, um, why not look at cleaning that up as well as the R three, R two? That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Doctor Simmons. Doctor Simmons.
Here.
So you said on the B two, there's retail. So what would you suggest?
So you, unfortunately, the way the zoning law is written right now, you cannot say to an owner, oh, I'm gonna give you B two, but I only wanna let you use fifteen percent for retail. Because the law has written any retail, any wholesale, any service. So that's where you're going to have to change your B two definition to fit your comp plan, or you're gonna have to change your comp plan come, you're due to do another comp plan in twenty-twenty, by the way. You're gonna have to change your comp plan because right now, that area is called transitional mixed use, which naturally has mixed uses. And I, I just don't know how you feel if it were all retail, but I don't know how they would feel if it were all retail. And I, nobody, nobody picked up on it. I did, obviously, because of my zoning experience. So I just wanted to point that out. Plus, the number of apartments that, if that were approved, is so far above what your comp plan called for, for what's called future land use, that it was just, it blew it out of the, out of the sky. So I just thought I'd point those two things out.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
One more thing that no one else has addressed. You're looking at cutting through on J Street. Right there on the corner is the McQueen Smith Center. You're talking, they're developmentally delayed. A lot of them can't see, a lot of them can't hear, hear. You're gonna force traffic right in front of their building, which is gonna make them have to put up a fence. They don't want that to be institutionalized. They don't want the appearance of being institutionalized. That's something they'll really need to think about.
Thank you. Is anyone else to address the council? Mr. Mayor, any closing comments?
Yes, sir. Uh, again, I'm glad to be out here. I feel like the process is working. But I'll certainly want to thank our department heads and our employees. We have so many dedicated, uh, department heads and employees. They're actually helped this mechanized, service-oriented organization that we know and love as the city of Prattville. Move, uh, and take care of business with the citizens each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Starnes.
Yes, sir. I want to encourage everybody to come Thursday evening at six o'clock on May third. Uh, we're having a committee meet and give their findings. Uh, it's about future school systems. Uh, what the committee's gonna be requesting is funding for a study. So, um, I would encourage each and every one of you to come Thursday night at six o'clock. Uh, we're gonna have a work session and a public hearing. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Cables.
Yes, sir. Just a couple things. One, I just want to thank everybody that came out tonight, whether you were for or whether you were against, uh, the zoning here. We have processes in place. We have these public hearings in place for a reason. And I personally just want to thank you very much. I also want to recommend that you contact the city council, or myself, if you're in my district, or any of my fellow counselors here, if you do have a question on anything. I heard a lot of things tonight mentioned, and I'm not gonna address all of them. I will answer Mr. Harrison on a couple things, though. Um, yes, I did my own work. I called a ton of people. I received a lot of phone calls. Thanks, Marion, for listing my unloved cell number on the flyer, so I did get a lot of calls.
Yeah, I was a little bit.
But it's, you know, it's a wonderful opportunity to, to really get a feel for the, you know, our residents. And we are partners, you know, everybody around here. Uh, the city mayor, the city staff, and the citizens, we're all partners, and we do need to work together for, um, you know, what probably should be, and everybody's opinion. Uh, the only other thing I want to mention is the comprehensive study, and Dr. Simmons did say that, um, it is due, and I could talk with Joel Duke about it. And, um, I think we need to start taking a really harder look at this, and I don't know what's been done in the past. I understand that the planning commission is supposed to review this every year. Plans can change. If you need a plan, have some flexibility to change it. However, we still have to have a common goal, and we need to have a guide of how we build out in the future. I think all this is something that each of us need to, um, take a harder look at, as well as the planning commission themselves. So, um, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stritchitt.
Yes, sir. I'd like to, you know, feedback on what Counselor Starnes said up here. First of all, great crowd. I wish y'all'd come every, every, every two, yeah, plus some months, knowing really, you know, we'll have snacks or anything, but we want everybody to come and be a part of government, you know? Our community is precious, and I can guarantee you that all seven of us up here, or six, or usually seven of us, some of you sent out of town on vacation. Good meeting them. Our mayor, his department heads, and everyone in this room is very, very passionate about this community. I didn't grow up overlooked. I grew up in this cousin, Camilla Estates. I know what it's about. I know what this community means. Right, Richard?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm gonna tell you that, you know, what we have the best, the city's best interest at heart, that's genuine, and that's from the heart. You know, personally, I wouldn't have been walking the street, being on north for three summers, if I didn't want to live here, and this town would mean this much to me, and my loving commitment to doing the right thing. And a lot of us up here have the same feeling. I personally am not a fan of adding more apartments to that area of town, into a cotton field, or, as the paperwork says, small houses. I want what's best for our community. A lot of things are gonna happen in the next couple of years. Hardy, Hardy Bar, the jets coming to Montgomery, more infrastructure, tier suppliers, a lot of things that are under, under works here with direct and open development. We're going to grow, and it's gonna happen, and we have to be prepared. We need to do it the right way. So I just want to tell you one more time, I'm not a fan of apartments either, and I'm not a fan of small houses, but, you know, we have to deal with, do things processively, with the process of done the right way, all evening. But, um, I appreciate everyone of you being here tonight, and I appreciate the passion and your commitment for this of Prattville, Alabama, and, uh, I think it's a great city in Alabama, maybe America, and I'm proud to be a Prattvian, too. We're here to work with you. Thank you.
Counselor Jackson.
Yes, sir. Sometimes being number seven really stinks. The Bible says that in heaven, the last shall be first, and I'm definitely waiting my turn, as I did tonight. Um, I'd like to say several things, that you come regularly, which I know most of you don't, you know, I don't do this very often, so when I speak, it's because I really have something to say. And I really hate that two-thirds of you are gone, who were here tonight, because we sat patiently and listened to comment after comment from you. And while I get paid to be here and to do my research during the week, I'd like for those who I listen to to be here, to hear me respond to them. So I'm responding to some of you who have now walked out the door. Um, but what I'd like to say is, first of all, we are responding tonight to a petitioner. Our petitioner has asked for something, and then he has asked for us to hold it, and that's the way things work sometimes up here. If you're here regularly to do our processes, you would see that it just happens pretty often, a petitioner will ask for something, and sometimes then they ask to hold it. Sometimes they even ask to remove it, and that's the process that we do. Um, second of all, specifically, it was said that only two people from this dais responded to an email. I did receive that email. I received it at four forty-five, as I was walking out the door to come down here, and so I am choosing to respond now instead of via email. Certainly, I'd like to say that I own property in this district. It is, I do not, but I do not represent this district, but I own investment property in this district. This petition definitely affects my bottom line, not just my life, my bottom line. Believe me, I have done my homework. Believe me, I've asked the questions. I'm seeking wisdom to do things the right way. I'm representing myself and not just y'all, because my bottom line is affected as well. And it's not the only property I have owned in that district, and because we do that frequently, we'll probably choose to buy more property in that district. So we are looking out personally, in my family, and in our business, which is the appraisal business, which is the process of value on the property. So if I thought that property values were going to be affected adversely, I would be a definite no vote on this. Believe me, I've done my research. I know exactly what affects property values. Rest in that the people who are elected here are looking out for your interests. Um, there's a lot of false information going around. When the mayor got it and pounded his fist, I wanted to stand in the shell, because what was said tonight was scare tactics. I've heard people scared into your safety, and your children's safety, and the safety of those who are developmentally delayed, and there is no person on this dais, the mayor included, who does not want the best public safety around. We pay for that. If things change, if there's more growth in Prattville, then through the tax base that this growth provides, we will use the tax-based dollars to grow our public safety. That's what we do. We will make sure that there are enough policemen, enough firemen, enough first responders who are trained properly to take care of our citizens in Prattville. Your safety is not an issue tonight. Please do not listen to propaganda, to false statements. Your safety and that of your children is not in jeopardy. While we're on this with children, we are the city council, we are not the Otto County School Board. Do we have children in the Otto County School System? Yes, we do. We are interested in it. We personally seek to fund those schools with our private money when we can. When we can't, we work together with the Otto County School Board in every way that we can to see that our schools are well-funded, are, uh, just the best that they can be. All of that is not our business. So we appreciate your complaints about these things, but that is not what we handle on a business-wise, although we do appreciate the concerns, and we are concerned as well. Uh, there was one comment of propaganda that came to me via email that said, um, that the city is not meeting with the school systems and doesn't know what's going on. That is a very incorrect statement as well. I know that on Monday morning, yesterday morning at seven o'clock, one of the people in this dais had a member with school board members, uh, had a, um, breakfast with school board members. So that is also false. So you are receiving a lot of false information. Please be skeptical about what you receive. Um, as far as the, asking us to postpone this tonight, because if we, not postpone it, if we did postpone it, it was because we did not want to address it. That's also incorrect. We have an opportunity to possibly change things in lieu of, in the way that you want them changed. So that is the reason we're taking a few days to postpone this and allow the process to work, is to listen to you. It is not because we do not want to address this. Believe me, every one of the dais has been working on this for some time. Um, so we will, we will continue to work on this and to bring it forward again for our vote. Um, and then finally, just gonna want to leave you with a saying that my grandmother, who has passed, always taught me as a child, and it was that you catch more flies with honey. And there is a time to be angry, and there is a time to storm, um, but vague threats and straight-out threats are not the way to handle things. Information, asking, talking, is, it's just common sense. You catch more flies with honey. So, um... So we might want to try that approach from now on. So anyway, my dinner is served tonight, I'm sorry to be lecturing, but when I sit here and listen to false information, then I just want to make some things clear, and I am here for your best interest, and I'm here for my best interest, because like I said, I have property there as well. So please trust us to continue to work the process with your best interest in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boom. I do express appreciation for your attendance this evening and for your comments, and for the staff and all the work that they continue to do to help improve our community. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of adopting resolution to adjourn, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, we are adjourned.